Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call the Missoula City Council Meeting of March 25th, 2019 to order. If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please let the record note that with the exception of Ms. Harp, Mr. Hess, Mr. Von Losberg, and Ms. Anderson, all council members are present this evening. We don't have any minutes to approve this week. Uh, I'm sorry, we do have minutes to approve this week, uh, for March 18th. They'll stand approved without objection? Seeing none, we don't have any committee meetings for the week of March 25th, uh, but I suspect we'll have some public comment. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda this evening. Any general public comment?
Candy Matthew Jenkins, 1211 Cooper Street. I'm sorry I haven't been in attendance lately, um, but I have a physical condition if with my neck and nerves and I can no longer tolerate cold of any kind, any kind. And my sole purpose tonight was to come and compliment one of the city council members, and if I get a chance to go back to the Soviet art of brainwashing, if I have time. I wanted to single out Michelle Kears. All the years I've been in city council, all these years, I have never singled out a council person for any, anything, but Michelle, I want you to know that I feel you have the most sincere smile I have ever seen in a long time. And I, um, and I know you never have done anything for me or anything like that, but I have had it on my heart all winter that to thank you because your sincerity shows in your smile. And it's like reading a lovely book, and I hope your parents are sincerely proud of you. I know that's odd, but 20, 29 years, I've never done that before, and I sincerely mean it, Michelle. Thank you. Well, I'll try to get some of this in. Um, I, to continue with reading from the Soviet art of brainwashing, um, read into the record in 1936 to 1939 on the House Un-American Activities Committee. And, um, since our president has stated, and I am fully behind, that this country would never become a socialist country, and socialism eats away at the fabric of America. And this series that I've been reading, the, these statements I've been reading are directly in tune with the anti-socialist.
Someone's calling in this evening, Ms. Matthew Jenkins. Sorry about that.
That's, no problem. No problem. I've had six kids, so, no problem. So I think it's important that I finish this mission that I have been on to try to make you understand what socialism and therefore communism truly is about. This chapter was Conduct Under Fire. Psycho-politics should avoid murder and violence unless it is done in the safety of the institution on persons who have been proven to be insane. Where institution deaths appear to be unnecessary or to rise in unreasonable numbers, political capital might be made of this by city officials or legislature. If the psycho-political operative himself, or if his group, has done a thorough job, defamatory data concerning the person or connections of the would-be attackers should be on file, should be documented, and should be used in such a way as, in such a way as to discover the inquiry. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other general public comment this evening? Mr. Moore?
Uh, Bob Moore. Last week, Elder Woman Anderson said, yes. I want to echo what President Von Losberg said, and I think this is one of the numerous examples of the benefits that Missoula citizens are having because we took the bold action to acquire our own water system. Luckily, I didn't fall out of my chair last week when I was trying to figure out how much money we had paid for that water utility. I can't remember exactly what it was, but I think the bonds were like $140 million that we're going to pay to a foreign bank, plus interest, for probably 25 years. But the apparently action you took, you're going to have a little bit lower interest rate, or at least you, minutes implied, you're going to have a lower interest rate if people want to borrow some money to, to repair their water main. But that made me think of something else. I attended the meeting when Peter Lambros came to the MRA for his shopping center's requests of taxpayers millions of dollars. Mayor Ingean was there, the MRA director was there, and the engineer from WNG, whatever it is, was there. All three of these folks was explaining and supporting why Murray Avenue just had to be built, because the citizens of Missoula was demanding connectivity. I guess they were talking about connectivity from Brooks to Reserve. I don't know what the final number's going to be, probably going to be around $10 million to put that road in there, including the four roundabouts. See, well, those roundabouts, they got more reason to pull into the shopping center. But that shopping center was not the reason for the $10 million the taxpayers gave the owners of the shopping center. It was connectivity. So, I'm thinking that maybe the mayor, I would appreciate it anyway, if you would do a survey to see if y'all met the goal, and now the citizens of Missoula are happy with y'all arranging this connectivity. And we'll forget about the fact that you built it for your friends and the owners of the shopping center. They just happen to be close to the road that you were putting in so you could get connectivity. However, if the connectivity, and you didn't really say it, but I thought the connectivity was Brooks to Reserve, or Reserve to Brooks. Uh, if you remove those four roundabouts, they could get back forth faster. So then they could really have faster connectivity. And then you could say, well, the citizens are happy now. We only spent $10 million instead of $140 million for the water that you might get a lower interest rate if you got to fix the, the water main connected to your house. So keep doing a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Other general public comments this evening?
Good evening. I'm Andy Helsel. I live in Ward Two. I'm here tonight to talk about the Zero Waste Initiative. I'm sorry, I couldn't get that. Do you want me to start over? I don't know.
It's on now.
Thank you.
Sorry. Andy Helsel, I live in Ward Two. I'm here to talk about Missoula Zero to Fifty, Zero by Fifty, Zero Waste Initiative. I think the plan is admirable, and I can appreciate that a great deal of thoughtfulness and gathering of stakeholders went into its initial development and implementation. Uh, I'm here tonight specifically to discuss the plan's policy path. 2050 is 31 years from now. Uh, my daughter Eleanor, sitting behind me, is five. She'll be 36 in 2050. Uh, if any of you have seen any of the research that comes out regarding the climate and waste, uh, you know that we don't actually have 31 years. This isn't, this isn't something we can plan 31 years down the road, though I do appreciate getting to zero waste is something that will take a long time. Um, this is something where the house is burning now, and we need to get out. Uh, I think there are really four key, in my mind, really simple policies the city could put in place now that would address waste today. One is, uh, requiring recycling. I saw that that's part of the Zero Waste Initiative. Um, I'm not sure I understand why it has to take so long to get to that part of the plan. Um, we could provide containers and clear instructions and do this especially in multi-unit buildings that currently don't have any access to recycling. So that's all dependent on the individual resident to care enough about it and then drive it to one of the two recycling places that you can drop off in this town, neither of which accept a whole lot of stuff. So there's still a ton of waste that comes from those, uh, folks living in apartment complexes, et cetera. Two is to ban the use of plastic bags in groceries and other stores. Uh, we know that waste is not the primary challenge when it comes to plastics. Instead, it's production. So if you ban the use of plastic bags, you immediately address the demand and production decreases. Three is to ban the sale of single-use plastic bottles. Other cities are doing this now. I think Missoula could be on this track right now. Uh, and the fourth is to ban the use of styrofoam-like containers. There was a bill in the State House earlier this legislative session, which died in committee, which is an embarrassment, and, um, it's clearly not going to happen at the state level. I think that the city could do it now. Uh, there are many, there's a city, Sarasota, Florida, which is actually about 20,000 people smaller in population than Missoula that's addressing this issue right now, so you could look that up. Um, and there are still all kinds of restaurants downtown that I refuse to go to that either have their initial service occurring on styrofoam plates and cups, or at least have takeout going in those containers. It's just way past time to get rid of that stuff. Um, it's clearly identified as one of the four guiding principles which inform the city's Zero Waste Plan, that quote, "Waste is not inevitable," that wasting resources is an unsustainable contemporary cultural norm, one which we need to change. The city of Missoula can be a leader in this. I saw that part of the Zero Waste Plan is to be a leader, to be the first city in Montana to go zero waste. I think the city of Missoula could be a leader on a number of other issues way before 2050. These are four of those issues. Um, I ask that you not wait and that you get to it right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
Hi, my name is Letitia Romero. I live in Ward Four. I'm just here also to continue to implore, um, everyone on city council to take urgency as far as banning plastic bags, plastic bottles. Um, I don't see it so much as infringing, infringing on people's rights, but it's so, um, stepping up for our planet and for Earth, for our future, for our children, for our water. Um, I think it's something that Missoula definitely, um, can do, and I have hope that, um, that we can do it and accomplish it. I know a lot of my friends and people that I run into at the store and everybody, um, they all agree that plastic is something we can, we can, um, just ban it. I mean, we're pretty creative human beings. I'm sure we'll come up with something, um, and substitute of that, that doesn't create waste. And as Missoula continues to grow, I think that's really important, um, you know, because we'll just continue to accumulate garbage and trash and, um, yeah, I guess sooner rather, rather than later, and if our language, um, reflects that, um, that would be pretty awesome, too. We need to take care of our community. I know it gets really overwhelming as far as like the world and outside of Missoula and Montana and everything, but I know that Missoula, as, um, as it is, a small community, we can definitely do this, and my wish and hope is that city council, um, just takes a li, a little bit more urgency. And, and like Andy said, and I know, um, a lot of other people have said that the house is on fire, and I act like it, you know, because it is. Um, but yeah, I think we can do this, and definitely, I'm just calling for a ban on plastic bags, plastic bottles, styrofoam. Other cities have done it, and they, and the citizens of those, of those cities are pretty okay with it. And I think we can do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Sir?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Stephen Schwartz. I am an assistant tennis coach at Big Sky High School. Uh, I don't know if you're aware of this, but the tennis courts at Playfair Park and Fort Missoula, on which the five high schools all depend for their tennis practices, are still extremely snow-covered. And we have been in touch with the Parks and Recreation Department, asking them if they will take steps to, uh, clear the courts, or if they will allow us to do so. And the answer to both questions has been a very firm no. Uh, it's, we are in a very ironically unfortunate situation. Most springs, the weather about this time of year is cold and windy and rainy, uh, but the tennis courts are clear and the nets are up. This year, we've got wonderful weather, and the tennis courts are covered with snow, and the net posts aren't even up yet. Uh, and there, there, it seems to be that there should be a way to clear the tennis courts, or at least get them to a point where the sun and the warmer weather can do the rest more quickly. Uh, I have been told that the tennis courts at Corvallis High School, for instance, which are on school property, are bare and dry, and they are practicing there all the time. And I would expect the same is true in Bozeman, where again, the tennis courts are on school property as opposed to being on city property. So I am hoping that bringing, by bringing this to your attention, someone here, Mayor You, Mayor Ingean, or whoever else you think would be appropriate, can at least find out from Parks and Rec why they cannot take any steps to clear the courts or allow us to do so. We would, by us, I'm talking about the, uh, the students who are on the various tennis teams to go out there with plastic snow shovels and wheelbarrows and remove the snow at least to a very fine layer, let the sun do the rest. Uh, or could Parks and Recreation at least clear the snow around the tennis courts so the water that is trying to drain can do so? It is blocked right now by all the snow around the courts. And this way, at least then, the water has, that is melting, can drain off the courts into, there is a drain there. I was there at the Fort Missoula Courts today, looking it over, and then, uh, you know, as opposed to the, the water just stays on the courts and refreezes at night. Uh, right now, basically, all that's been done, they have laid some kind of tarps over the snow in spots, and I, maybe that's helping. There is some of the tennis court surface showing up through the snow now, but, uh, the wind screens at the tennis courts are still up. They block the sun, and the tennis, so all the snow at the south end of the courts is much higher than at the middle and the north ends of the courts. And I would just like to ask if there is something that can be done, if there, if Parks and Recreation can think outside the box a little bit perhaps, and see if we can do this. We've got kids, we, we're supposed to have our first tennis meet in Missoula, April 1st, next Monday. Uh, chances are, that one's going to have to be postponed unless something can be done. Uh, at Big Sky High, we've got a dozen or more kids who are little more than beginners. Some of them are outright beginners. They have never been on a tennis court in their life, except the couple of practices we've been able to hold at the Peak Racquet Club. Uh, we're doing all our practices in the auxiliary gym on a gym floor, which is extremely fast. It's faster than the grass courts at Wimbledon, and so it's very hard to, to have any kind of constructive practice there. So that's my request to you.
I appreciate your bringing it to my attention, Mr. Schwartz. I'll reach out to Parks tomorrow, and we'll be in touch tomorrow.
Thank you very much, Mayor Ingean.
Thank you. Appreciate you taking the time. Any other general public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our consent agenda. Items there were approved unanimously in council committees, and we save a little time on Mondays by considering these items all at once. Ms. Raybine will read the consent agenda aloud, so folks in the audience and those at home will know what we're considering. We'll take comment before we vote. Ms. Raybine?
Thank you, Mayor Ingean. There's five items on tonight's consent agenda. The first is to approve claims in the amount of $699,505.28 for checks that are dated March 26th, 2019. Number two is to approve the River Road Neighborhood Council bylaws. Number three is to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Sonia Verlanic, John O'Connor, and Dale Harris to the Parks and Recreation Board for terms to begin on May 1st, 2019, and expires on April 30th of 2020. Number four is to appoint Jacob Zander to serve as alternate member on the Design Review Board for a term commencing April 1st, 2019, and ending on December 31st, 2020. I have some competition out there, folks. Uh, and number five is to award the bid for curb sidewalk, ADA curb ramps, and associated improvements for project number 18-026, which is the Patty Street to Caris Park Sidewalk Improvement Project, to CSS Contracting in the amount of $30,358.50, and authorize the return of bid bonds.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. I've never actually seen anybody that upset to leave a council meeting. Uh, anyone care to comment on any of the items on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, questions or comments from council members? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the consent agenda, Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Becerra, Becerra votes yes. Kears, Kears votes yes. Dabari, Dabari votes yes. Jones, Jones votes yes. Merritt, Merritt votes yes. Ramos, Ramos votes yes. And West, West votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is, uh, did I miss? Okay. Um, it's eight ayes and four absent.
And the consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to comments from city staff, agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, and the community forum. And we have a Grant Creek Neighborhood Council report this evening from Mr. Lindler.
Good evening. I'm Bert Lindler from the Grant Creek North Reserve Neighborhood Council. On March 13th, we held a general meeting at the Hub Recreation Center on Expressway, just across from the newly annexed Canyon Creek Neighborhood. About 10 neighborhood members attended the meeting, which was announced by postcards set to all Canyon Creek addresses. Directors of the City Public Works, Parks and Recreation, Fire, and Police Departments discussed the services their departments perform and answered questions. City council members, Martha Becerra and Gwen Jones, also took questions. Jordan Hess was unable to attend. Neighborhood Coordinator Jane Kelly discussed the history of the city's neighborhood councils. The residents discussed a number of topics, including whether residents who didn't wish to be in the city could rescind their annexation. They were told they could not. Another frequent topic that came up was the narrowness of the neighborhood streets that makes it difficult to plow the streets and could present challenges for fire trucks and other emergency vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindler. We will move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. State law, our own council rules, set guidelines for hearing public comment on a variety of issues, and following a staff report, council and I will invite comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as, as the public hearing, unless one council member elects to return the item to committee for further consideration. Uh, this is a continuation of last week's public hearing, which we opened on, uh, a resolution to amend, remove or relocate an alley barricade, in this case, about the corner of Higgins and South Avenue. Mr. Monroe? As soon as technology catches up with us.
Thank you. Troy Monroe, City Engineer. Uh, so tonight will be our second, uh, hearing on this, uh, proposed alley barrier. Um, last week I did not have a presentation ready, so this will be, uh, new and great for all of you. Okay. So what we, um, have on the, the screen behind you is the site map of the area, just to give you an idea of the current conditions. This is the Hoagieville site. They have, uh, two entrances here on Higgins, a north and a south, and a third one on Livingston. The plan for the new Brood Tap House, um, they will have this entire area filled by their building, so there will only be currently one entrance in to a parking lot, two-sided, and that vehicle would have to also exit to Higgins. So what they've asked for is an, an exit here onto this alley. So the history of this alley, back in 1988, city council approved the resolution to put a barricade right here at the midpoint of the alley. The barricade prevents vehicles from traveling from South Avenue to Livingston, but they are able to come midway and then exit to the west to Lester. So we're, working with council, we'd come up with, um, three different options. This first option is to remove the barrier in its entirety, and it would bring the alleys back to full function. The barrier here at the midway point would be completely removed, and this section that was previously closed to traffic will now be open north and south, and enable the people leaving Brood Tap House to come and exit both directions. Another option would be to relocate this barrier south 30 feet. This would allow people to leave the Brood Tap House, but not travel south with the intent of the original, um, resolution, but it would allow their customers to leave both north and west to Lester. And then the third option is to leave the barrier where it remains, but to go ahead and open this part of the alley to Brood Tap House traffic. So it would still follow the intent of the original resolution, which prevented north-south travel, but it would allow the customers of Brood Tap House to exit to the south. And the last thing is just to show you what the existing barrier looks like.
So, Mr. Monroe, does staff have, have a recommendation for the council?
The, uh, city engineering is in support of all three of these. Um, the preferred would be to, let me see here. The preferred would be this option, and this is to remove the barrier in its entirety. to bring the alleys back to their full function. We would mitigate the issues by offering to put in speed bumps on the south portion. And other things could be maybe limiting the traffic from here and directing them to exit to the north.
Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on the alley vacation this evening?
Sorry, maybe this is a little out of order, but one of the other items that Troy didn't mention tonight that I think we've talked about in the past is the implications for what portions of the alley need to be paved in relation to each of these options. Would you mind going over that real quick, because I think that's an important piece?
Okay, so for this first option, which is to remove the barrier, the city code requires the commercial development to go ahead and pave the unpaved portions nearest them, which would be a portion here to the north side. The rest of this is already paved to south, and then all of it, south to Livingston. In the relocate, they would be responsible to pave, again, the portion to the north, about a quarter of that block north, but then also the entire half-block to the west to Lester. And in the keep option, they would just be responsible to pave the portion they'd be using, which would be from the barrier south to Livingston.
Thank you. And anyone interested in comment? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Ms. Kares?
I have a couple questions. My first question is for the applicant. I'm hoping that they can approach and remind us as to their preferred option, and then I'd like to break in my questions.
Chris Goldblatt with Hoagieville. Out of all three of these, we support, like Troy said, the removal of the barricade so they can exit three directions out that alley, with the speed bump, of course.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kares? Okay, further questions? Ms. Jones?
Troy, I just wanted to kind of ask a further clarifying question. You said if the barricade is removed and speed bumps are put in, there also could be, I guess you would put signage in if you were exiting the parking lot from the tavern, stating that it would be a right turn only, because in my mind, that would decrease traffic in the residential areas and increase traffic, hopefully, going through the commercial area to the north. And I know not everyone won't necessarily follow that sign, but a lot of people would. Could you just expand on that a little bit?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we could definitely have the applicant put in a sign here. It would just be a narrow part that they leave, so it'd be very easy to put a sign up there asking the customers to make a right turn only. We wouldn't put any type of object in there to force that, but it would be our suggestion.
Mr. Dabari?
Pardon the sniffling. Two questions for you. Is the proposed exit from the parking lot, does it line up directly with the east-west running alley?
No, it does not. It is...
Slightly south?
Yeah. So this area that you can see, the striping of Hoagieville, this is the minimum width, so it's almost the exact same as what the Brood Tap House would be. So that exit would be slightly south than the east-west line.
Can I follow up on that question? Is there any obstruction or turn radius issue with somebody, if somebody wanted to make a left then onto the east-west running alley?
There is an existing tree that is within the alley easement area, and that would need to be looked at by their contractor to see if that needs to be removed. There is, this house here has a stack area for garbage cans, but we looked at it, it looks like it would probably be outside of the area.
May I ask another question? Under what conditions would the remaining north-south part of the alley to South Avenue be improved? It looks like there's just pavement that, I don't know if the edge of that curb there is the edge of the alley. I guess that my point is, is at some point, the alley actually will need to be delineated rather than just have it be a sea of asphalt, and I'm wondering what conditions would need to occur for that to happen?
Yeah, so existing, when you're, this is on south-looking, south direction. The Domino's Pizza facility has a parking area here that's fully paved. The connection between the Domino's and the gas station is also fully paved. This extends out to the entrance here on south, but what's not paved is the actual alley width, this 16-foot gravel portion that heads to the barrier. So in plan view, this area from this tree down would need to be paved by the applicant. And then depending on whatever other location, if we keep the barrier in place, they would also have to pave this portion of the alley out to Lester. And in all the options, they're paving south.
So in that photograph, there was a pickup truck parked in the alley? That's not really supposed to happen, right? Are we gonna, can we post no parking signs in the alley so that it remains clear instead of obstructed?
Yes, so, you know, it's, it's never been enforced in this area just because of how the situation is, but with a formal through pavement and stuff, I think it would look more like a through road, and people won't be using it for parking.
Ms. Armstrong?
Troy, so I'm assuming there's a dead-end sign on the other side of the alley, so I'm assuming that will be removed if we remove the barricade. And my other question is, once this gets paved all the way through, will this become a, will this become a service lane? So will trash pickup occur here? And if so, who's going to plow it?
Okay, to answer your first question, yes. In their site plan, we'll have them remove any signs that no longer pertain, and to put up the signs that are required for the alley and the right-of-way, that kind of stuff. As far as what will it become, the applicant has reached out to public services, and they've talked about how they would be able to utilize the alley more for garbage and such. We don't know of other utility services that would be using it. We believe that, again, from the applicant, that their deliveries will still take place here on Livingston Street.
Apologies, my last question was about plowing the lane.
Plowing the lane?
Who's responsible for that?
Those who use it. The city does not plow alleys, and so if their customers are having a difficult time, they probably want to plow it, but other than that, there's no city service that does that.
Ms. Kares?
Just a confirmation question. I know we've talked about notification, and I don't see any responses in the supporting materials, so just confirming, no response from any neighbors, particularly Helen.
Nothing came into city engineering.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Ramo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick point of clarification. I know you said that the applicant would be responsible for the paving and possibly signs, but I thought I heard you say that we would put in the speed bumps. Is that correct? Like we, the city, would put in the speed bumps if we removed the barricade?
No, that would, that'd just be a requirement that we would put in on their approval. So the applicant, whoever does their construction of the alley, would go ahead and put a speed bump in as part of that construction.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? I'm sorry, Ms. West?
I was curious, it's kind of a tangential question, if, because this is, can they finance their alley paving similar to the sidewalk program, or no?
Yeah, so the applicant did reach out to the sidewalk group, Monty's group, and it was determined any type of right-of-way improvement can go through that same eight, 12, 20-year process.
Thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none, Ms. Becerra?
Okay, so we have a recommended motion to adopt a resolution to rescind Resolution 4765 and remove the alley barrier behind 2413 South Higgins Avenue and install a speed bump south of the existing barricade and a right-turn-only sign at the intersection with the establishment parking lot. Does that sound okay?
It does.
Okay.
That motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Kares?
I support that motion. I feel like we, we heard about this a couple times, both from the initial conditional use, was it a conditional use? Yes. And now again here, and I've thought about this for a couple months, and I feel like this satisfies both the concern from the southern neighbor, who has been a long-term resident and helped to create the original Resolution 4765, but it also helps the applicant with their travel and customer travel, and I think addresses the concerns that we heard last week from the owner of the pizza delivery company, concern about speeds while they have rules and regulations, they can't promise that their drivers will follow them, and having a suggested right turn only hopefully will create a pattern of traffic that doesn't have those folks traveling south down there. And the speed bump, I think, also addresses that speed concern. That's why it's called speed bump. So I will be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Further discussion? Ms. Merritt?
I also support the motion. Thanks for, everybody for putting the heads together to get something good here. I also think that it's a, this results in a reasonable amount of paving on the part of the applicant. I understood that the paving the entire east-west section of the alley was going to be rather costly, so that's part of the reason why I support this. Thanks.
Further discussion? Mr. Dabari?
I'm going to support the motion as well. I just would like to thank Chris and his team for being patient and continuing to invest in our neighborhood. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
Okay, on the resolution, and this is removing the alley barrier, installing a speed bump and a right-turn-only sign, that's the option on the floor. And first vote is from Becerra. Becerra votes yes. Kares votes yes. Dabari votes yes. Jones votes yes. Merritt votes yes. Ramos votes yes. West votes yes. And Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? I have eight ayes. Well, I don't, but there's eight ayes, votes, and four nays.
And the motion is approv-
Four absent.
And the motion is approved. I have no communications from the mayor this evening. We'll begin general comments from city council members with Ms. Merritt. Ms. West, Mr. Ramos, Ms. Becerra, Ms. Kares, Ms. Jones, Mr. Dabari, and Ms. Armstrong.
Thanks with council's patience. The last couple of weeks, my father-in-law passed away, and we have best wishes to my husband's family and his wife, so thanks for your patience.
We have no committee reports this evening. Our item of new business is legislative update. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none. Any additional items to be referred? Seeing none of those. Any miscellaneous communications, reports, petitions, or announcements? Seeing none. As always, I thank you for your service. We will be adjourned.